Have a slideshow for you. Just a recap, we had started in 2015 with a petition for the drainage in this area, budgeted $313,500 off an original estimate for the job. If you'd hit the next slide for me. So, I don't know if you remember last week when the gentleman came. This is the situation that he's talking about. Kind of to answer that question, the ditching is very steep. And if you'd hit the next slide, I can kind of explain. So what we're going to do is we're going to change, and if you can see in the bottom left-hand corner, it's an example of what the ditch working is going to turn into. It'll be a lot shallower, but that also means it's going to go into their yard a little bit further. It'll be done at a three-to-one slope. And then it will have the original intake was something that Jesse and the gentleman that spoke last week talked about. It'll switch towards that. It'll sit at the bottom of that ditch and take all the water in. And then there's a culvert or a tube going underneath the driveway there. If you'd hit the next slide. The engineer's estimate is $305,611, and that includes the driveway tubes as we spoke, kind of in the discussion items, that that was something that we would include in this project, the property owner's driveway tubes. So it's a fairly marginal gap between that and the budget, but they're still underneath for an estimate. We got to bid here, approved, if approved, here in mid-September. Get bids back in October, and I don't know with timing, there's a gas line that's kind of in the way that's maybe needing to be moved, so we'll see when actual construction starts. But I have some plans, some generalized plans.
Throw up on the overhead net?
To kind of give you an idea on what the ditching and the extent of it will turn It is all along the vineyard area between, I don't know what the West Road is. And it goes to just right before where it reconnects with Mount Pleasant Street. So that is the first, furthest extent west that the ditching will take. As you can see, it goes south there along the north-south roads, but that's where a breakpoint is, and those roads all drain towards the south, towards Kirkwood. So if you'd slide it across and then maybe jump to the next page. So all that red is, the red hatching there is indicating is the amount of ditch work that would be taking place. And then there's driveway tubes or culverts along the alleyways and the roads and all the driveways, so.
How many of those are there?
Oh, I knew you'd ask that. I don't know that. I think there was like forty-some driveway tubes. Unfortunately, to do all that work, you're going to have to get in there. The work was already planned anyway around that to reditch it. I think the added cost is mostly just the driveway tube itself or the culvert. That's all I got.
Well, this kind of gives me cause for concern because our next issue, our next item is talking about doing those driveway culverts throughout the whole city, which I'm not in favor of. And so how can I not be in favor of that and then be in favor of this is my issue. So. How much, how much are we talking about? Do we have an estimate on it?
The amount that those driveway tubes cost?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe it was about forty, forty to fifty thousand dollars in driveway tubes.
Yeah.
And that's included in this budget figure you showed us, right?
Correct. The work around it, the excavation of the old driveway tubes and the surface replacement is something that was going to be covered in the cost of the project anyway, because it was initiated essentially by the city, but the driveway tube itself would be something that would have been. Under our current code is something that the property owners would be paying for. But because of the conversation, the discussion a few weeks ago, it was put on there as our costs.
Do you have a comment on that?
Really, this is a project that was initiated from the local area wanting to see done. We see the value for water drainage in having this occur, but there are other areas in town that have, that face comparable circumstances. As Nick has looked at what other communities have done, and I don't know if you-
That'll get into the next item. As far as, as far as the code change.
Yeah.
For some reason, I didn't decide to print off the code and so I can throw it on the overhead projector. I don't know if you have it in your packet where I could throw it up there.
Yeah.
Borrow from the city council.
It's in here.
There we go. Oh, we do have it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Stephanie. So as you can see, I went in, I had a really hard time on how to change that code, didn't really know the direction that we were headed. When I first initially read it, I was a little concerned with us installing brand-new driveway tubes or culverts anytime someone wanted a driveway. So I left kind of the initial wording, or the wording for the initial installation of a driveway tube up to the property owner. What I did change was the backend of it in the event of repairs and maintenance, and that would be covered by the city. Did I give you that second piece of paper of the list of cities? When I did some research on this, I came across, I just, to be honest, I Googled it, and then I called a lot of our comparable cities. A lot of the cities in Iowa have our current code written in their code of ordinances. And so it was hard to try and find somebody that would have had something to emulate or something to go after. And so this is what I came up with. I don't know if it was the initial meeting from what the group had talked about, or the direction on that ordinance, but this was my best attempt at it to try and get it so that it was a maintenance aspect rather than an installation. The one concern from an operational standpoint that I have is this is something that we currently do not have budgeted for, and I'm estimating between fifty and seventy-five thousand dollars a year in costs on what we would have to go in there and replace. And it's an unknown, just because we have a lot of seal coat streets without curb and gutter, and that would be a lot, there's a lot of culverts out there that we would have to now maintain. That means a lot of staff time, too, so I just want to bring those concerns up. If you'd throw up that list of cities, I mean, it's not an exhaustive list, I must've left it back there. It's not an exhaustive list, but Atumwa, Clinton, Marshalltown. I'll just read them off. I already had, said half of them anyway. Norwalk, Indianola, Perry, Monterey, A lot of them I just got in a Google search when I typed in the chapter code, and that came up, and I found those. So I'm hesitant from an operational standpoint, budgetarily. I mean, it means a lot of staff time and money to go out and do this, but I just want to let you know that ahead of time.
I guess from, you asked a recommendation, this has not been something that we've recommended making a change going along. This has been directed from the council-
Right.
-to be moving this route. And, I mean, our recommendation really isn't any different than what it was before, but that being said, we have been proceeding down this avenue based off of the council request to do that.
Well, I'm not in favor of this, of the change. I think it should be the way it is, stay the way it is. So.
I do, too.
I think a lot of homeowners would agree that we can probably spend our time and money elsewhere. I mean, like potholes. I'm sure a lot of people would say things like that. I guess what would, what would be defined as maintenance? Would clearing it, you know?
I would say that in all likelihood, you're going to get into the jetting of culverts, ultimately replacement if they're rusted out or if they're overly full of sediment, which is a bigger question on the ditching in, you know, in that area, and you know, how far back are you now ditching to try and meet the grade of the existing along with Things like that.
So you have two different issues with the ordinance itself.
Right.
To try to do, if you're going to do something with a given project, are you going to then do the same thing with the rest of the community?
Right.
And if you don't, then you have to justify why it is that you're going to pay for the cost on one, but-
Not for the other.
Not for the other. Typically, if you weren't taking over this cost, you would have a process where if you were mandating this work to be done, potentially assessing a portion of cost-
Right.
...to the property owners. That hasn't been the avenue that has been discussed with the public.
Yeah.
It's kind of hard to do that.
You know, it's, we're kind of at a-
At this point in the process.
We're rocking a hard place, kind of, really.
We sent out letters to all, when we had the initial meeting at the library with the vineyard area people, we had about twenty people there, we resent out the letter letting them know about the public hearing. And Jesse will be here next week, and he will have, I'll have him bring some of the data on, on what their responses were as far as paying for driveway tubes. That initial meeting that we, we told the group that our current code says that the property owner is responsible for the driveway tubes and culverts, and let them know that that would likely be a cost that they would absorb. And based on some of that information, we came back to the discussion item. But we can bring some of that information back again if it'll help make a decision. I won't be here, but Jesse will, I'll make sure he has that.
So who initiates? I assume the property owner calls and says, hey, my culvert has got an issue. Then do we go out and do something, or is that how that works?
If we were to do this code change, I would say that it's very much similar to potholes or intakes or anything, a problem that is there, and then we would have to make an assessment and then address it as time allows, and I guess finances allow, too.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm not in favor of changing the code. I just tell you that right now, but what does that put, if we do, if we don't change that code, then where does that leave us with this Vineyard Street project? Are we, like you say, are we going to say we're making an exception for them?
Well, I think it depends, because you, there's some additional information that you have about what the initial group came forward with possibly-
There was, there were some that were fine with paying the driveway tubes, but I think as far as what you're saying is, is does your decision to approve the spending on the driveway tubes for the property owners in the vineyard area go against your city code? Then I would say yes, but would you look at it as a situational? I think that's for the council to decide, but do you set a precedence? In all likelihood, yes.
Well, yeah, for sure. Well, I'm not in favor of that, so.
Well, I'm not either. So what is that? So if we don't change, then what happens? We can still go ahead with the project with the owners knowing that the expense of the culvert is theirs?
Correct.
But I think if you're going to do that, you need to go back and take some more time to now, now approach the project. Do you, and present it to the homeowners, do you want to do this knowing that you have this potential cost there and see what kind of-
That sounds reasonable.
What kind of willingness there is on their part to move forward with this.
And so how much does that cost? Would it be for a home?
For the homeowner? City cost or property owner cost?
Property owner.
Most driveways are about twelve to fourteen foot. It was about four hundred, five hundred dollars for that type of driveway, and I'll have Jesse bring that information next week.
All right. All right. And you said how many of those in that area? Say it again?
I think it's about forty of them.
Anything else? Bob?
That's enough.
I guess that's where we are right now, Nick, so thank you.
Would you like me to reduce that, that out as of right now, or leave, leave those costs in there as far as a plan to be presented? I mean, ultimately, they're going to be in the plan set-
Right.
-as far as there's something that needs to be redesigned.
Right.
But as far as a cost, that's something that doesn't necessarily have to be decided.
If, I would say that if you're not going to consider this as a project where the council's picking up the cost, or the city's picking up the cost of those tubes, that you kind of want to delay your plan specs, accepting them at this point-
I agree.
-and do it later. Now, the part of that, there, you have a different council group here than what you had several months ago when this was first brought up.
Right.
And you're going to have a different council in a month, and then you'll have a new council in January. So depending on how long you delay, you change the dynamics of-
Exactly.
-of how you are dealing with this community group.
Right.
And it's kind of up to you. We're, right now, you're on the path of doing the project with us picking up all the costs. I think that if you're going to do anything else, you're going to have to slow down and reevaluate.
I agree with that. And that's the way we should go.
That's the way we should go.
Do you want this still on? Is it on for a public hearing next?
It's been published.
Yeah, it's on a public.
So your reaction as we get out, go through that public hearing and what to do afterwards?
Yeah.
You, you may be in a spot where you're not wanting to proceed with this.
I would expect that people on Vineyard Street wouldn't be very happy about that.
I think you'd be correct.
You're not running for reelection, though, so.
Well, that has, has absolutely nothing to do-
Excuse me.
Has nothing to do with it. Okay. So we have taken care of then items four and five, unless you have any further comments about?
No.
No?
What are your thoughts, Annie?
So what are we going to do then for next week?
Well, we have, we have a public hearing set, so we have to have the public hearing on the Vineyard Street, and we might-
You have a public hearing on the other one as well.
And we have a-
But it's-
Public hearing on the driveway culverts thing. And I have a public hearing, and then I'm going to vote against it, so.
But you'll have to see where you all stand as you get to-
Okay.
And the Vineyard Street thing, if it gets voted done, come back later as a different project, perhaps, without the culverts.
Okay. I guess, yeah, I'm worried about putting it off as well for too long.
Yeah.
How quickly can we get it back adjusted?
Well-
That's my question.
If you're looking to go out, do this where you're not paying for the cost of the culverts, I think you have to have, go through a process where you ask what, whether, where the homeowners are in regards to paying a portion of the cost for that. And then you have to decide, are you, how are you addressing that? Are you doing that through an assessment process or what? You're going to spend a few months getting that done, which is where I don't know that it makes a whole lot of sense to approve plans and specs and form a contract when you're going to be several months, you're going to be, you're going to be several months off.
Right.
You're probably, really most likely, if you delay at this point, waiting for a spring-type project and doing it over the course of the winter, getting ready for it.
And I hate, I hate to backpedal on something when we're so-
That's, that's a decision from you as a group.
That's a... All right.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. It'll be interesting to see what happens next month.
Will you be here?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. You know me, I don't, I don't miss. All right. Next item is a resolution awarding contract for the 2017 Harrison Avenue Storm Sewer Improvements. Okay. Back to Mr. McGregor.
You did, you did skip one.
The?
The second reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. You read it number five, I'm sorry. Motion for preliminary adoption, second reading of ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the City of Burlington by amending the standard penalty for violation of city code. I'm sorry, chief. Excuse me.
Yeah, no, there's-
Thank you, chief.
There's no changes unless you have another question?
No.
No.
That's probably why I skipped it. Now, Mr. McGregor. Contract for 2017 Harrison Avenue.
This award was supposed to be on last, last time's meeting. It was delayed because of a contractor's bid was formally withdrawn. The resolution calls for awarding bid to Phi Excavating in the amount of $243,347.47. The engineer's estimate was $282,603. KA Excavating did submit a bid of $102,988, but then the very next day wrote a letter withdrawing the bid due to unforeseen costs that they didn't bid on. After speaking with the engineer, V and K, that did the design work, we thought that this was the best route to go. Now this award is contingent, and you see that in the resolution, based on BNSF approval. The way that this storm sewer is discharging is going down, of which we're getting an easement for, which is a set date on this agenda, but for a week from now, going down and discharging underneath the same culvert. But because we are redirecting, redirecting it, BNSF has to review it from a third party to see if there's any sort of unforeseen water being displaced on them. So I don't know the timeframe of that. I wanted to award bid to Phi Excavating based on that contingency, so that way when we are told that it's a go, that we are able to have them start work immediately.
Okay, that was going to be my question.
So if BNSF comes back and tells this, tells us that we need to change the scope, we've already forewarned the Phi Excavating crew that we will have to go out and redesign something and then go out to bid again.
Okay.
Depending on the change of scope, you know, after talking to V and K, I don't think that the scope will change drastically, but you never know. So I recommend awarding bid based on that contingency, and then the contract will reflect that.
Thank you, Nick. If you have a question?
Who did not?
I don't have any.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Moving to the consent agenda. Resolution accepting a Deerfield Drive right-of-way.
This is the street right-of-way for the second edition of Westbrook Meadows Town Homes out off of Gear Avenue. Previously had a resolution accepting operation and maintenance of the paving sewer and storm sewer, but I think we had this issue with Legacy Drive as well. The county asked that we have certain language when we transfer those now and want those recorded. So this is just a recording of this document so that it becomes city right-of-way instead of a private right-of-way with public utilities in it.
Okay. Okay? Yeah? Resolution approving an amended energy efficiency plan agreement addendum between the City of Burlington and Hy-Vee Supermarket at 3140 East Agency, Burlington, for the purchase of up to two charging systems.
We had had a grant from Alliant Energy to get five charging stations overall, one in our parking, two in our parking lot, one out at the college, two at Hy-Vee. And we had approved all the contracts that were associated with that from the council, I don't know, six months, maybe a year ago.
Seems like it.
Hy-Vee wanted to rewrite theirs, and so that took a significant amount of time in making sure that Alliant got the terms that they were willing to have in that, in terms of requirements from a sub-recipient of their funds. They did sign off on this final agreement, so for us, it's not a big deal. This was more of making sure that Alliant was getting the information that they wanted and the rights to the readings and the maintenance of those stations in place for the agreed-upon term. So they have finally agreed on it. This is something that Hy-Vee is okay with, and we just have to be able to formally accept it as well.
Okay.
In terms, terms of our requirements, this doesn't make any difference from what the original agreement was.
Okay. Do we have any, any idea how, if, and how often those things are being used? Does anybody keep track of that?
That's, they do keep track of it, and we, I imagine as time goes on, we could ask Alliant for that information, because that's one of the things that's, that you'll see incorporated into this agreement. They want to see the usage of this over the course of time to see how they are used. But I don't know that we have any information now on that.
No, I just asked Jerry, and Jerry said that they've been being used, Hy-Vee's have been being used publicly.
Okay.
So I imagine that we can try to make sure that that gets done, I don't know, I'd say on an annual basis. I mean, we could on an annual basis if you wanted to, but-
Just one more report to do. You okay?
I'm good, thank you.
Bob? Resolution approving purchase of a single-axle dump truck for Public Works Streets and Sewer
For you is a resolution awarding contract. We had a budgeted amount of $105,000 this year. The total came in at $113,000, which is a little higher than what we had budgeted. We did, however, save some money on the street sweeper and look to be fairly under budget with the flusher, so we'll be about even, and that's all road use tax funds. It is two separate bids off of the chassis and then the dump box and the snowplow, and staff recommends approval.
1992, how many miles does that have on it?
I bet it doesn't have a ton of miles, but I bet it has a lot of hours.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, Annie?
Good.
Okay, now we're setting a public hearing for September 18th for the permanent easement associated with the 2017 Harrison Avenue Storm Improvements, which Eric just talked about. Discussion items, net for treasurer's report. Get excited looking at numbers that don't have parentheses around them.
Yeah.
That's good. Okay, so June's report is in here again. I've updated it through August 21st. There's still some things that are, that have happened after that date that are not reflected in here, but nothing that's going to decrease balances necessarily, like the general fund, where like about 12% right now.
Twelve, okay.
Yeah, and so-
Shoot for 50, right?
Yeah, but-
The general fund will end up higher than this.
Yeah, because we had, we made an engineering transfer after this date, so that's not reflected in here. So revenues will increase for the general fund.
I don't know where the general fund should end up, but my guess would be if we're at two, what were we coming into the year, 2.5?
Yeah, there's like 290.
We should gain 150 to 200,000 anyway-
Yeah.
-over the course of the year instead of going down. And your vehicle maintenance and property maintenance right now have-
That's my question.
One shows a-
Well, one is positive, one's negative, and, and it's because I have not done the final transfers out. We like to get all the bills paid so we know what needs to go back to this year before I do the transfer, so I don't have to do it several times, because those are internal service funds and they should zero out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just haven't done that yet, because we usually accrue through the end of August bills that go back.
Yeah.
So we're getting to that point, but we're not quite there yet.
Okay.
Okay, so then, in, also in the packet was July's treasurer's report. And so things that I can tell you about this is like the revenues are really small for the general fund, and that's because- that's because most of them got accrued back to last year. It's like property tax that we got in and stuff like that all actually belonged to last year.
Oh.
And that happens every year.
Yes.
So other than that, I mean, going through, there's just, again, the property maintenance, the beginning balances will change and things will change as I make those final entries for last year. So I don't know if you guys had any specific questions?
So no surprises, right?
No, no surprises.
We've got a lot of money sitting on hand. About 12 million is in capital projects for, I mean, the police department as an example having 4 million, the flood wall having close to 5.
Yeah.
And Agency Street has, has funds sitting in it too. So even though we, a large portion of that balance is money that's been set aside or borrowed upfront to do projects that are underway.
Right, and then like if you look at the capital projects, like West Avenue Roundabout has a negative, but that's because I haven't got my draw from the RISE grants that were, so that's all timing stuff.
Okay. I really appreciate, we get these every month. Do a good job on that, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, anybody else have any questions? All right, thank you.
Cascade Bridge wasn't in there, was it?
I, I was looking for it. I didn't see it.
Couldn't find it, okay. Thank you. I'm not gonna give up.
Good for you.
It's my favorite bridge.
Next, we have a presentation from, or about the Young House. Who's doing that? Nobody?
Yeah, I wonder what that was about?
This is something that Shane arranged. I was, was kind of wondering about. I didn't...
Okay. Well, it's not happening. Okay.
The executive director from there is on vacation this week, so if she was supposed to do it, she wasn't here. But we'll try to get that, whatever that is scheduled for.
Reschedule. And next, we have a presentation from the Landover Corp with Family Housing. Mr. Solva, I believe.
Yeah, Richard Solva, Landover Corporation. I was last year before you, two years ago. We talked about doing an affordable housing project on the Salter School site. As you know, that project was not awarded, but we're back today seeing if you folks would still be interested in doing that. I prepared, I think in your packet, you have a one-page letter presentation and a lot of, lot of backup data that went along with the original proposal. I have a couple of, can you, can you put the pictures of the building there? That picture right there, that was the original building that was proposed for the site. We could do something like that, but we, we wanted to talk to you about possibly alternative. That's, this is a project we just completed in Marion, and actually a project we're building in Otomla just starting next week. And then the third project, another look, a little bit more of an urban look, this, this project is under construction next month in Cedar Rapids. So we can do different looks if you feel that the neighborhood would be better served with, you know, a particular look, certainly. But basically, we have the same exact site plan. Everything else in the proposal is the same, except for the fact that I noted in the letter was that this, this project would have to be a family affordable housing project, because the senior projects this year, two years ago when that was approved, the state gave preference to senior projects. This year and last year, they are not giving a preference. They give a preference to, to family projects, and as a result, if you submit a senior project, you probably will not be funded this year, so. But I feel actually pretty good about, about the project, how it's fair, and I think there's a pretty good chance that we could get it funded this year.
Well, I see in here that the scope is reduced from 60 to 52. Is that
Yes.
your goal then? So the density would be less?
A little bit less, yeah. We need less, less parking. We could have more green space.
Yeah, yeah. And so what do you need from us?
Just the, just the okay to move forward to file an application.
What's your residential component mix? This is with low to moderate income. Is there like a percentage of units that have to be in?
60, 60%,
60% of income?
Yeah.
Is the cap for all of the rooms, or is that?
Yeah, yeah. Exactly.
Is discussions, you as a group have gone different ways over the last few years as to whether you're willing to do a project such as, as this?
Right. It's kind of hard for the three of us to...
Right, have that kind of a conversation, especially when it comes to the...
And I, and I know the person that sits in this seat has some strong feelings about the issue.
Yes, he does.
Yes, the mayor wasn't in favor, I don't think, when you did the original proposal for this site. He at least expressed reservations about it at that point, just for location purposes.
Yeah, I don't want to speak for him, but...
But, yeah. And you, by the time you have something come forward, you would have a fifth chair filled, so...
Well, the problem with, if, if we wanted to move forward though, we'd probably have to move forward pretty quickly.
Yeah, that's the issue.
Application will due November 16. The property was previously rezoned as part of this, and I don't know if that could be kind of fast-tracked to do it again, but it was done at that point.
So did that, Eric, go back because the project didn't go through?
It was contingent upon receiving the project.
Yeah.
One of the things that still sits out there, the match on that, most projects, you have not had a willingness to go as aggressive with what we did on that other, the original one.
This project, right.
We haven't seen anything for the pro forma in regards to what the overall project cost would be and what it would take to get to that 7% local participation.
It would probably be almost identical. I mean, that's, the building isn't, isn't going to change, basically, because you have family units, you have, they're larger units. Some, some of the units are larger, but they're not ones and twos.
That's why they reduce.
That's why you go from 60 to 52. But it's basically the same building, same site plan, same demo cost. Most, most, everything is the same. So I'm thinking that the budget, which we could obviously produce, would look very, very similar.
You'd want to see the budget.
Sure.
But this is putting cash in for years 10 through 15, which, well, you, you weren't in favor of doing this with the Apollo Building a year ago, but you were in favor of it with the senior housing project two years ago. And you can, we can present something or have that be what's moving forward or anticipated, but it's 7% is the match that, that he's trying to get to with whatever that dollar amount that's going in there.
And we probably, we probably could make that work with less than that, Jim. Bottom line, we'd have to look at it. But there's some, there's some things in the, in the, in the process this year in the application which might make that not, not quite as important.
Okay, right. Getting it down to the, I mean, the 10-year schedule that's in there would be, the closer you can do that, the better it does for making...
Yeah.
I mean, that's, the aggressive 10-year abatement was designed to try to be something that you could do for all projects in the area, but...
Yeah. And the, the need is here, by the way. We did, we went back and looked at the marketing research that we did two, two years ago, and then I've kind of followed up with some information locally. Burlington is one of the cities that actually has a need for, they have a need for both family and senior housing right now. There's just not, haven't been a lot of new apartment projects built recently, as you probably know, so.
So the thing that got done for the Apollo Building could not, could or could not be done for this? The expand, the area that we expanded to fit that abatement schedule?
This is already in that, that expanded.
Oh, it is?
That 10, that, the aggressive 10-year bait area.
All right.
Yep. It already has it.
It's already there then.
Okay. And there's, there's no doubt that that would be a nice addition to the neighborhood in terms of appearance?
Oh, for sure. What's...
Oh, definitely.
Thing what's there, yeah.
Definitely.
You said, when, when is the application due?
November 16.
November 16?
There's, there's two things that I would have a concern about having the council look at. One's just the approval of whether you'd be willing to, to support the project in general. The other is what, how the match is, would work.
Sure.
And you're not in a position to know how the match would work at this point yet.
Not, not exactly, no. But, you know, what, what we would need at this point, we're, I mean, we're, we're less, less than 90 days out, so we, we would have to know very soon whether or not the city would support the project. I mean, if, if you're not interested in support, if you are interested in supporting the project, we can work, work with Jim on, on the match. I mean, if you're not interested in it, then I'd like to know, actually.
I'm interested in the project, but I'm not interested in rushing. I don't think that these kind of projects should be rushed, especially when it comes to, you know, things like TIF. The residents here are, they don't, they don't like it when we do things like that, especially in a rushed manner.
Well, remember, we did this whole thing two years ago.
Yeah.
Did the rezoning and, you know, everything. We can, we can redo that whole, that whole process, certainly. But we don't have a lot of time.
A lot of people weren't happy then either.
True.
I don't know. I do think there is a need for family housing, but again, I just don't want to rush it, and especially when we're going through a transition period. I'm not, I'm not comfortable. But I don't know how, I guess, would be, I don't know.
I'd be interested in hearing what they have to say, what type of thing we can work out. At least I'd like to do that, unless you think that's a waste of your time.
Do you think that we would, by the September 11 work session, September 18 council meeting, that you'd be in a spot to know where we sit for
Oh, sure.
anything beyond needing a resolution of support?
Sure. Because, because my, I mean, my guess is the rezoning could be done pretty quickly since, I mean, I mean, all the paperwork, everything's done, basically. But with, with respect to the financial aspect, and that's, that's really the only thing that the city would have to be, be involved with.
Correct, yeah.
That's, that's the only thing. Other than that, I mean, the, the project is basically the identical project that we submitted before, although we can make it look, look different.
Sure.
Certainly, if you want to make it so. No, we'd be, be happy to sit down with you, Jim, and go through.
Would that timing be okay, Annie?
I think that would be maybe better. Yeah, I definitely, yeah, I don't think that making a decision too soon. I wish, I hate it when we have to make these decisions when we're going through transition. That's tough for everyone.
But business goes on.
I know. Business goes on.
We'll plan, we'll plan on that. And, you know, as you're going through your process, that's one of the things that you have to be, you as a group are going to have to be thinking about who fills the, the fifth chair too. I mean, I don't know what, all different criteria, but they're, they're coming in for two months and they're going to be in a position to make, have to make decisions and without
Yeah, exactly.
ramping up with a lot of knowledge of what's going on.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll set September 11th as work session as another discussion item or...
Discussion.
With the look to do a resolution, if, if you're okay with it to, to have that on the 18th as a resolution of support for the project.
Good. Okay, great.
And with our commitment as to what it will be.
Yeah, and my, just based off of what you've done with past projects, I'd like to, the closer we can get to using a 10-year basis, the better you are for consistency, but that doesn't mean that you can't do something that's different.
Exactly.
Because you, I mean, you did it two years ago, but...
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next item is Mr. Dan Cahill with his TIF proposal.
Dan Cahill, 1414 Hillary, Burlington. I understand that this is a work session, so you can't make decisions today, but I hope to let the council know where I'm headed with my proposed subdivision on West Avenue. It's been, it's gone through several, oh, good, you got it up there. Here, I had all these papers I was going to hand out. That's great. Thanks, Eric. The part in yellow is the eight acres that I bought. Below that line is the 10 acres that Mike Moorfeld, an electrical contractor in Fort Madison, bought. I met Mike. He's a good guy, and he has a great deal of experience in doing subdivisions. He's doing two of them in Fort Madison right now, one of them with a very nice TIF package. And I wish he was here today. In fact, I invited him, but he was busy and couldn't come. My original plan, do you have the original, can you put that up? I've got a copy. That's a lot better, yeah. My original plan was to bring a street in, well, Klingler and Associates are drawing this up for me. It's just not my ideas. I asked them to take the land measurements and, and do what they thought would be the most efficient layout for this eight acres. That's what they came up with, and I really like it. As you'll see up to the left, shallow detents, got the detention ponds, got access to West Avenue. I've asked them to widen the entryway there on the right, because I think all the traffic we have on West Avenue now, it's really, you know, difficult to get out there so people could turn right, all right? And that was my first plan that I proposed to the planning department, and boy, did they twist my arm. Have you got a copy of your city plan from 1999 over there, Eric? I've got one here if you need one, if you could put it up there. Not that one, it's this one with the dots on it. Yeah, that one.
Uh huh.
Okay, so this is then what the, what the, what the planning department wanted me to do. That's West Avenue there at the top, and you can see my street coming in with a little bend on it. And they would like to have that street run clear over to Mason Road. Well, the idea of a north-south arterial road is really a good one. Unfortunately, it's something that a private developer can't afford to do. It just is impossible. But it certainly would, would help the area, and I, I thought for some time they needed it, because I've tried to get from Mason Road around the corner to West Avenue, and you've got to go almost out to Roosevelt to do it, and then come back on West Avenue. Kind of a pain, and there's a lot of traffic out there. So I agreed with them, Eric and Charles, that, that I would check and see if there isn't another way we could do it. In fact, Charlie did say, well, let's take your plan and see if we can amend it some way that it would make it acceptable. And have you got that, the newer one there?
Don't have that.
Okay. I have, I have, I have the old plan that we have, that with their health, I guess, an amended plan with it through a street. But the problem is, I, my land only goes back so far. It doesn't go into Mr. Moorfeld's property. The lot lines, we can, we could put in, take out the cul-de-sac and run a road that stops at his, there, there's the original plan, and you'll see the dark lines there. We've only had Klingler, I just had them do that to see if we could somehow get a road that goes over to my lot line. That's the slanted line right there. And they can do it, and I still end up with 16 lots. Unfortunately, it's about 165 feet, see my scribbles in the middle, additional street, additional sewer, and additional water line. So it's substantially more expensive than the, my original plan. I'm, I'm certainly willing to consider it. The first, the first drawing is my preference. The second drawing, I think with negotiation with the city, we could do and would be of great advantage to the city. I mean, that's just my opinion. It'll get it down into that field, and Mr. Moorfeld, I think agrees that if we can get that road through his land on the same terms and conditions I'm going to recommend for my land, he would do it. So that's one option for us. Well, here's another option that I hadn't thought of. The city has condemnation rights. If the city really wants a road through there, they could condemn, they can take, you know, condemn the roadway and put it in their cell. Obviously, that would cost a lot of money. Obviously, that would cost a lot of money. As a taxpayer, I guess, in the city, I wouldn't recommend it, but it's certainly a possibility. Actually, the road could be farther to the east and come through the field that way. This land has been unavailable for subdividing since like the 1920s. Mr. Valmer owned it, and he was a city engineer, by the way, and it came down through his family to Helen, oh, the trust, the... Yeah, Swisher, Helen, Ruth Swisher. She had it all in the trust, it went all the way down, almost so you can get to Mason Road, it's an amazing piece of land, to have that much vacant space, that's 10 acres, in the city of Burlington. And you could see off to the, to the right on your map there, the gentleman owns that, he has a big piece, and of course Sunrise subdivision has got land over there. So someday, I think the city would like to have the road go from Dill Street forward to Gilbert, and that makes, that makes a lot of sense. That would give an east-west and a north-south street, and I understand that on Sunrise is going to bring that, this street into their new addition to their, to their project out there. That's where it says in the sign right there, the M is on that street stuff, and I think that's gonna be more duplex condos there. And I've spent some time out there this weekend, they're beautiful. Maybe someday I'll be able to afford to live there. Now, the second plan, with the street going straight through, does several things that really helps the city. This isn't just done to help Dan Cahill, but it really does help the city. Garden, Willow, and Dill, and Aspen, those areas over there, have complained to the water company about low water pressure. Not pressure, but what is it, Eric?
Volume.
Volume, water volume. They don't have the volume that they need for those homes. And if I run a water line through there, of course, with the extension, it's gonna, gonna take, it's gonna take more water for my subdivision, and that's, Shane at the water company says they can tap it to help Dill. They like putting in what they call a loop system, we've been through the loop system. And, and he thinks this will help that water problem. Now, it'll also help Willow Street, you see Willow? They've, they've experienced a tremendous amount of traffic because of the new school and the big condominium that's out there. A lot of traffic goes across there, because that's one of the only ways to get over to West Avenue. But the traffic is pretty good. And so I think if we did a street straight through there, if the city would select my second idea, or their second idea, which I kind of think is appropriate, it would, it would definitely help the traffic problem. You know, the nice thing about this, too, is it doesn't cost the city a penny, not one cent. Not like these other housing things you hear about, 7% of this and all this isn't that. This doesn't cost the city a penny. And it does, will provide, my plan will provide more moderate-type housing, because I'm not gonna build houses that are gonna be $400,000 and $500,000 houses. I want houses in the $250,000 range. Now, the city is gonna say, well, you got a promise to build them, you know, that and reduce the prices. You can't do it. I can't make a promise like that. You can have a $5,000 kitchen, or if you've had your wife remodel your kitchen, you know you can have a $50,000 kitchen. And that's why I can't say, they're gonna only be $250,000 houses. We have a subdivision just exactly like what I want this to be in Burlington. And I want the council members to drive out there and take a look at it. It's called Linwood, and if you go to Casey's store right across from the airport and head east, it's Linwood, and it's got a series of condominiums, which I built behind Casey's, and then across the street, it's got modest ranch-style homes, three bedrooms, two nice garages, nice garages. And we can do that, and we can do that, I think, for $250,000, unless people go crazy on their flooring and they want granite countertops and all this stuff. But we can do it, I plan to do it. Now, I'm not a house builder, I sell the lots to build houses. I mean, I may have to build a couple to get it started, that's the way it is in a subdivision, you have to build, get it started, people see it, oop, and, and that's what I plan to do here. And I plan to build some condos just like the ones behind Casey's. So I'd like to have everybody take a look at those. They're very nice, they sell well. I sold those to those people eight, nine, 10 years ago, and for $125,000, they're two bedrooms, 1,400 square feet, walk-in closets, two full bathrooms, $125,000. One recently sold for $185,000. And so that, you know, that's what happens, property value. So I think we can still build those in that, in that range, $185,000 to $200,000 for those. Anyway, that's my idea, I just wanted the council to be aware of it. It will be moderate housing. Now, in order to get this job done, and I'm, I'm in a hurry, too, I guess all people want to develop, so this other, all the precedemees in a hurry, too. I am in a hurry, I wanna start this roadway this fall. I'm gonna do it as soon as the corn comes off my land. I guess I'm a co-owner of a cornfield, but as soon as it's out, I want this road to start going in. So we're probably looking at October sometime, and that's why I've asked to be on the planning commission's agenda for the 19th, and the city council's agenda for the following meeting, assuming I get approvals along the way, you know? If I don't get them, I don't get them, then I'll be in the corn business. Now, here's what I need from the city, and that's why I'm giving you some advance notice. First off, I get the planning commission, the council, to approve the plat, either my first plat or my second plat. And I guess I don't really care which one. The first plat is cheaper, I still have 16 lots if I do the second, second deal, but it's a little more expensive to me. I've gotta rezone the land from R1 to R2, which you can build condos in, Eric has told me that. The R2, you can either build the condos or you can build single-family houses. So I plan to have single-family on one side of the street, just as I do on Linwood, and modest houses on one side and condos on the other. Oh, and you know Iowa has the workforce housing resolution that the city can pass. You pass a resolution saying, oh, we're in favor of this, and that way the builders get, not me now, the builders get kickback on the sales taxes that go into the materials that all went to the houses. So that's a pretty good deal for the builders, you know, and they're interested, and that'll make this thing fill up quicker. So they get tax benefits if we do it, and I would have to have that from the city, and I see Negraki just got it from West Burlington last week, so I don't think that would be a problem with the city here. West Burlington waived the filing fees, or, you know, that's, I just found out how much it costs to even build a house here now, just on the way of filing fees, it's or permit fees, somebody told me it's about $15,000. And the water company even charges you a fee, which I don't understand, because I have to pay to put the water in, and then if I build a house and hook up to my new water line, I gotta pay another fee. Doesn't make sense, which is a money-raising thing, I think, for the water company. Anyway, they're very good, they're very good and very easy to deal with, by the way, this Shane, I talk about a good employee. Now, I need planning commission approval, city approval, rezoning, workforce housing resolution, and as Jim knows, the fourth thing on my list is approval of a TIF district designation, which is allowed by state law, and, and other cities use it and use it a lot. Even cities in Iowa that are growing like weeds, West Des Moines, Waukees, Ankeny, they all use these kinds of incentives for development. Ankeny's the fourth fastest-growing city in America, and they use incentives, they don't use residential incentive, they gave you one of those, but there's another. So, you know, TIFs have such a bad, boy, you say TIF in Burlington, and you're lucky to get out of the room alive.
Thanks.
I remember when Mitch Taylor and I did our TIF for Pheasant Run, oh, 19... Whatever it was. That's, so I, I, I got some information about TIFs, so that everybody has it, and I hope that the Hawkeye uses my information, and that the radio station uses my information. I wanna get the word out there that TIF is not a dirty word. It's tax increment financing. And tax increment financing, for example, this is how it works. No cost to the city. This was Pheasant Run. And I'd say the best example of the benefit the city receives from TIF financing is the first and last residential TIF that was established in Burlington. That was Pheasant Run subdivision, and it's 57 lots. Mitch and I asked that 10 acres, or whatever it was, be annexed to the city in 1993, and it was. Actually, it's the land that borders Negraki's land. We also tried to buy Negraki's land, and we had an option to buy it, but we couldn't convince the city to do another TIF. The city manager at the time was dead-set against TIFs. Okay, November 15th, the city included Pheasant Run subdivision in the urban renewal district. That had to be in there, it still is, in order to qualify for TIF. You gotta be in an urban renewal district. Well, the whole city of Burlington is an urban renewal district, so that's no problem this time. At the time we did that, the base, you have to establish the base taxable value now, before the TIF starts. At that time, the base value of that agricultural land was $29,516. And the real estate taxes paid on that land were $400 a year. These are really interesting figures, I wasn't even aware of them until last week. Okay, so the city issued, well, TIFs were different back then. TIF, the city issued a TIF bond of approximately $750, which was a good way to do it. I mean, now, cities don't like it, evidently, because of your limits on how much debt you can have, so they've gone, the state has now provided a separate system to do TIFs. And that is where the developer arranges to pay for the improvements, and then gets back a portion of the TIF, the tax increase. Okay, real estate taxes for fiscal 1995 through '05 paid to the city of Burlington to pay off the TIF bond in full, $895,575. That paid the bond in full with interest. And the city didn't get around to releasing the TIF district until two years later, but basically the city was out of it, and we were also. So, number seven, you may or may not agree with this statement. Fiscal year '06 taxes begin the tax gusher payable to the city, county, and school district, okay? And, and I've listed the taxes that that subdivision has brought in each year since 19, or since 2006. And you'll see them there. First year, the city, the school district and the county got their money, it was $139,000. And on through those years, 11 years up to last year, the taxing entities received $1,927,000 on that little piece of land. Now, I think that is absolutely amazing. The tax bills just came out last week, we all got them. The taxes on this subdivision this year are $229,000, I didn't add it in there, I just, you know, put it that way. Now, so that's why TIF financing of a, of a development is important. It's great for the city, and the new way the TIFs are done is even greater for the city of Burlington, because all you're doing, if we, if, if, if I'm awarded this TIF that I have to request, the state says that the city gets a certain percentage of that increase in value, which is like 39%. I'm sure Eric's got the exact 39.2% of the incremental taxes generated by this development. Well, to round it off, I like to just say 40%, because the math is a lot easier for me. And then the balance of that, the 60% of the incremental taxes, goes to the developer to pay off for the street, sewer, water, engineering, and, and, oh, and Alliant, you know, because there again, the developer gets to put in the wires and all that underground for Alliant, and then they charge you to hook up, and then they charge you every month, you know, to use it after you put in the system. Doesn't seem right. In prior subdivisions, they did it a different way. You put it in, and then as people build a house and got built, Alliant would pay you back, you know, till you got your $10,000 worth of whatever it is back. The water company did the same thing. They used to, actually, they used to put it in, and it didn't charge the developer, because they were getting the benefit of the water system that you had to put in. They don't do that anymore, you gotta pay to put it in. So anyway, that's, that's what I need to get this project going, and if I don't get it, hell, yes, I don't get it. I mean, as I say, I'm gonna be a farmer on eight acres. And, and my proposal would be, the split on that incremental tax would be 40% to the city, which you get to keep and you get to use for low-rent and moderate housing. That's the idea of the whole thing, low-rent and moderate housing, you get. So, if this costs me $350,000 for the, for the infrastructure, which I'm guessing that's gonna be about right with the increased street sewer and water, you can figure out what 40% of that is, and that, over the years, that's for the first 10 years, and I don't think the 10 years starts until two years after you get your project done, because you don't even start, if you build a new house, you don't start paying taxes a year or two. There's some delay there. After 10 years, it ceases, and after 10 years, then, the city doesn't get 40% anymore. All you get is their regular share of the tax bill, and the school system gets almost all the rest. And then the county gets a little bit of it, the school system gets it, and you get 36%, or whatever your percent of it, look at your tax bill, it'll tell you what percent the city gets. I think it's 36% of the taxes on city property. So, I, that's why I think a 60-40 split, that's, that's fair, that's okay with me, and I can, I can do the project and, and be okay. Oh, on this handout I gave you, I did that on purpose, because I want the word to get out, that TIF is not a dirty word. And, and I also wanted to get the word out that residential development is a good thing for the city. City councils, boy, they'll just jump all over to give benefits if it's a commercial deal, are you gonna build something this or build that, it's commercial. They get all the money, and it's never made sense to me. Now, here, why residential development is so important to our city, that's the next thing I wanted to just visit with briefly. Okay. These are the subdivisions that I've done in the last, since I got out of school and came back to Burlington in 1966, seven of them. Now, most of these I did by myself, some of them I got friends to come with me, because, you know, they were really expensive projects. But look at this, Wet Camp and Hoath subdivision was the first one, and you know where that is, because you just bought a lot from, or the airport just bought a lot from Wet Camp subdivision, that bar out there. We sold that lot to that guy years ago. But the subdivision there was 14 apartment lots out front, you know, those duplexes and sixplexes, and, well, that's the part we kept, and those, those items bring in $45,840 a year, our apartments. We don't own them anymore, but. We also sold 37 residential lots behind those to Bob, Bob and Edith Kelly, Bob remembers them probably, and they built all those little houses back there. I didn't even put that in here, because, but we put in the subdivision, did the subdivision and all that. Irish Ridge Estates, nine lots, that's where I used to live, that brings in $64,342 a year. Quail Ridge, Bob knows where that is, that's $120,000 a year. Eagle Ridge, that's one I did out, you know, kind of, well, south of town there across from the airport. Pheasant Run, that's one Mitch and I did, $219,000 a year. Madison Avenue, I did that one some years ago, it's only a two-lot subdivision, because Steve Hoath got on our behind at a council meeting, called us robber barons, and I forget how many acres we had, 20, 25, Mitch and I did that, I guess. And he got, we were gonna put a road in, so Nakona Place Road wouldn't be so a bad access, you know, oh, river, your lots wouldn't, great. Couldn't get the job done, couldn't get the subdivision in, because one guy came in, and he was a very good friend of mine, and objected to it. It's too bad. Now it only brings in 3,700 a year in taxes for the two houses that are in there. Park South, that's where I live now, $206,760 a year that brings in, can you imagine? I mean, I'm shocked.
Are you really?
I am. That is really a lot of money. And you know what? It's not just for one year, it's for every year. It's for every year. And it's for the next hundred years, I mean, if Burlington is still here. That's what's so incredible. And that's why it's so important that we have residential development. I mean, that's the way I look at it. I mean, you know, if it was commercial, it'd be no problem. Okay. I don't think I have anything else I want to say. You've had those, Eric, you had those good pictures. That is very helpful, and I hope that maybe we can use that when I have to come before the planning commission, or when I get to come before the planning commission.
Yeah, get to, that's a good one.
Okay. And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them now, or if you have any questions, you can call me. The figures you've got on that little handout are audited by the Des Moines County Auditor and the Treasurer's Office. And I did that so you didn't think I made up how many millions of dollars I've been bringing into the city all these years. And the other thing, I really would like to have you, if you have any interest in this at all, to go out on Linwood and look at those houses out there. Yep, they're beautiful. And you'll see a lot of oak trees, pin oak, my favorite tree. I put a pin oak on every lot when I did that subdivision, and it's really dynamite. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You guys have any questions?
I do not.
No? Thank you. Well-prepared presentation. Thank you.
You're telling a fan of tips.
What do you have to say, sir?
Oh, the process, if you're moving forward with something on this, you have, this is not an-
It's urban revitalization area, but not urban renewal area.
And so it needs to have, it'd have to have an urban renewal area created?
Yeah.
That process requires a legal description that you're looking to do. If you're really wanting to do this, you'd have to decide, are you looking at just this subdivision, or are you looking at that whole area between West and Mason for infill development to be part of that urban renewal area? So, that's part of, you have to have a decision on what you're doing there, because you have to come up with a legal description that you're going to do that for. We'd have to have Bob Joston create the language for that, have a public hearing on that, that 'd be set by ordinance, which you typically do with three readings. I guess part of that, what I'm saying for the, from the TIF side, you've got well over two months.
You have to, you have to be in an urban renewal district. But honestly, I think some years ago, Burlington adopted a resolution that said the whole city limits as an urban renewal district. If you've checked it out, I really think that-
We have, Bob Joston has our, go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, we have an urban revitalization area that the whole city is in, that allows citywide tax payment, but the urban renewal areas are separate. They're very similar, but they're separate type of areas, and that would have to be set up specifically for the TIF.
So, the process to get a TIF set up, if the council is wanting to go through this, is going to take, I mean, we went through it back in January, it was well over two months to get it established. It's, Eric, did that require having the, those three, the three readings on the ordinance and having that established, and then you could do the development agreement after that? Because we, that ended up not occurring.
I'd have to look back at our process.
Ryan had-
Approved portion of it, but not all of it.
So, but it's at least a two-month process if you're looking to do it. At the, when we went through that process, I didn't recommend doing, I mean, I'm not a fan of TIF for housing. But if you are going to do it, it should be for a defined purpose. And with, like with Ryan's request, he based it off of, he mentioned Moorfield's development. He looked, he had talked with Moorfield, and he saw what their development agreement was down in Port Madison, that's what he presented to us. If you're looking to do something like that, and you were to take a look at our housing study that showed a shortfall in certain price categories, you could, it does make sense from that kind of perspective. If you're saying that we want to be able to provide some incentive for infill development, I could see that as a reason to try to talk about TIF that could make sense. I know Charlie would have different things. He's looking at a cash return basis, which is much different when you're looking at it from an economic perspective. But it's up to you as to what you want to do and what you think is a good policy decision to do. I just think that if you're going to do, use TIF or consider TIF, you should have a good reason, sound reason, why you would do it in one spot and not somewhere else.
Probably ever since I've lived in this town, I've looked at that acreage and thought, this would be a great housing development. So, I can see, because we're going to put a new road through there, I can see how the TIF would apply to that and open up an area that should be housing developed. And particularly if it goes, if we can get it all the way through, we get Mr. Moorfield to go along, get it all the way through to Mason Road, that would be outstanding.
Yeah, that'd be a major improvement, no question about that.
Opening up Dill to Gilbert would be really something, too. So, I'm interested in pursuing.
Are you looking at it for just a piece of land that he has, or are you looking at it for a larger area?
No, I think you'd have to look at the whole-
Larger area.
Have to look at the whole thing.
Should be very easy, because they just have a lot free and this subdivision. I mean, that's heavy.
Yeah, this was subdivided as part of the Swisher subdivision with a lot three and a lot four.
Lot four, Swisher subdivision, lot three, Swisher subdivision. So, it doesn't have to be surveyed, it's already, you know, the exterior lines. But I think it's just a great, Dill Street could tap into this also, and then eventually bring in a street, you know, from Sunrise over there. I'm sure they would have, and really could use it.
And actually, I might even be wrong on how to talk about that, and that might be something to talk with Bob about. Housing subdivisions are different from other TIF. TIF for housing subdivisions is much different than TIF for regular projects. It has a shorter lifespan for those subdivisions, so you would prob, I don't know if you set up the, I guess you could do the full urban renewal area, and then you set up a smaller TIF project with a smaller one that has a time clock that goes with it. But again, that's going to take some time for Eric. He can look, the first step would be setting a public hearing, which is going to take some time even to get from, you can work with Bob and get that on as soon as you can work it through the system. I don't think you're going to get that for next week, though, is what I'm getting at.
But it also has to get through the planning commission.
Well, the TIF is a little different than getting, the planning commission is going for the rezoning and the preliminary plat. You can do and establish your urban renewal area without getting, without having gone through that part of the process.
We did an urban renewal plan last time, that went through the planning commission.
That had to step through there, too. Differences between TIF and what would happen otherwise, these properties then would not be eligible for tax abatement. Tax abatement, if they use the ten-year schedule, Eric looks at-
It's a four hundred and forty percent of value.
Is the total, you get about four point four years with the taxes abated. With a TIF rebate arrangement, they're paying the full taxes immediately, about sixty percent goes back to the developer over a ten-year basis, so you see about six years' worth of taxes is diverted to the developer instead of four point four years to the homeowner. And the other variation is, even though they're getting sixty percent rebated back to them, it's not sixty percent of the full value, they're still having to pay for debt service. There's a few levies that are protected now, there's a couple of the schools portions that are protected and can't be part of that rebate back. So, it ends up being a little less than six years' worth. But that's the route you want to see happen as an urban renewal area, look to be established for that full infill area.
What do you think?
I think so. I think that it's a huge piece of land that needs, that needs developed, and I know from a safety standpoint, because of the school there, and we've had complaints about the traffic, that we do need a road through there.
I agree.
Which is one of, it is one of the things that he's coming, that I understand the idea that cul-de-sac works better from a private development perspective, or just that.
There will be people, maybe, that would want a house, if there is a cul-de-sac, that won't want it if it's a through street with traffic, because I think the traffic will be substantial. But that's okay.
Okay. Anything else?
No, it's just Eric will just have to-
Moving ahead.
Yeah.
Moving ahead.
Just wanted to caution you, it's going to, it'll take quite a, those are quite a few hoops to work through on the TIF side.
It would, especially if we didn't already have the legal district. But with that legal district, I would make the lawyer, the owner, the property, press the computer button, have a resolution prepared.
Our computer's wonderful. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Salby, are you just here for-
Support.
For support to add to the appearance of the meeting? Okay.
Run through a presentation here, Stephanie, if you could switch over to. Just wanted to go through an update on Flin Hills Golf course. This has been a topic of discussion with the council through budget discussions, as well as we have an upcoming CIP project that is a significant amount that we want to make to upgrade the course there as well. So, just a brief overview and kind of give, I kind of give an overview every year with the budget updates, but eighteen-hole par seventy-one course. We have season passes, cart rental and cart storage, daily green fees and rentals, tournaments, leagues, junior lessons, merchandise concessions, doing online reservations, email, Facebook updates, kind of similar to a lot of golf courses in that sense, but do have a lot of comments that it is kept in a very good condition, and that's something our staff takes pride in, and they do a very good job on. Kind of twenty seventeen year-to-date in review. We had an early start this year in February, mid-February, which was very early, did have a positive impact on revenues, but something that isn't traditional start time for the golf course. Teams per tournament, we are slightly down, but our number of tournaments are growing. Pass holders have seen steady numbers, and rounds have seen steady numbers over the past year. This is a summary of season pass sales and cart leases from January to December. One thing that's difficult is, we operate on a fiscal year basis, but we, from a financial standpoint, but from a practical standpoint, it's a year-to-year, calendar year basis. So, looking at twenty seventeen season passes, those were all in, primarily in fiscal year seventeen. Hundred and thirteen this past year, which is up a few over the previous year. Looking at the trend, kind of fluctuates a little bit between one-ten and one-fifty-four for a high in twenty thirteen. Cart leases is up over the last four years as well, with a fluctuation between forty-nine and sixty-five and fifty-eight last year. Total play, again, from a January to December standpoint, seen very steady numbers, twenty-nine, twenty-eight, twenty-five, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, the last five years. Year-to-date in the twenty thousand range, again, had the early start, so might have had some additional play, but we have a couple months left of play to add to that as well.
So, we probably will get to that, almost thirty thousand.
Yeah. I would expect to be over this year.
Tournaments and outings, see that holding very steady in the last number of years, between twenty-three and twenty-six. League play, have seen some increases in that over the previous years, up two over last year. Also, note was, the Thursday league used to be, started as a two-person in twenty sixteen, it was singles in twenty fifteen, so that number would be even greater, it'd be thirty-two individuals playing in twenty sixteen and-
Oh, yeah.
Twenty-eight and twenty seventeen versus the twenty-two and twenty. So, the total play on leagues has seen a trend upward in the last four years. Tournaments typically Saturday mornings and Friday afternoons, though that can vary. Had a very full schedule this year in twenty seventeen. Still have a large number of outings in September and a couple in October as well to add to the list. Operating budget summary, this is non-capital items, just looking at what we're spending from, and generating in revenues and then spending in expenditures over the last few fiscal years. Do see the trends of revenues going up each of the last number of years. Expenditures has gone up as a whole, though it did reduce down this year a little bit. And again, that expenditure is non-capital items. With a balance, from an operating standpoint, you see ranges from making four thousand in twenty fourteen to forty-five thousand in twenty thirteen. But again, that's operating, that doesn't include capital costs, but just from, from that standpoint, I'd like to see that as a positive number. Capital cost, that varies as well. FY thirteen, we didn't have any cost. Last year was a low number as well, a little over four thousand for batteries. Previous years include mowers and golf carts. So, that shows what the capital costs are, which generally comes out of hotel motel funds, separate from our operating expense, but again, as an expense. So, you look at the operating balance versus what those capital costs are. In FY seventeen and thirteen, obviously, they did cover that amount just from the operating, but in the other years, they did not. In upcoming FY eighteen, we have a very large item that we discussed during the budget, the pump house, budgeted at a hundred and twenty thousand, mower at twenty-two, and golf carts at fifty-six, five fifty. Maybe you can talk about the timing on the pump house?
So, we're getting ready to send out, send out for bids for the pump house. Everything that, the experts that we've talked about on it, it is a custom build item that takes six to eight weeks to build, so we would look for, to have a deadline to receive bids at the end of September. You know, hopefully award that contract, and they would be able to install it over the winter season, so it would be installed by March fifteenth, so we're ready to go for next spring.
Describe what that does a little bit.
So, the main pump house runs all of our irrigation to our fairways, our greens. I don't recall the year we were installed, we're over twenty years old on the one that we have now. It is deteriorating. The useful life on a pump house is approximately fifteen years. Some of the issues that we've been having with it, we are struggling to find parts. There is some pressure tanks involved with that, that are deteriorating, that could pose a hazard, they could explode. We've had some issues. We're only, one of our pumps is running. We've had, been able to get that repaired at this point, but with a new system, we would be able to water more efficiently. Right now, we're running an irrigation cycle, it's approximately twelve hours, so we're starting about seven forty-five at night, and it's running until about seven forty-five in the morning. We'll be able to pump more water. Also, with a newer system, what we've specced out, we can gradually bring up the pressure in it. What we have right now puts a lot of pressure into our pipes, sometimes causing breakages. A newer system will gradually ramp that up to hopefully not have so much air hammer on our pipes to cause breakages. So, you know, obviously, it's our bloodline at the golf course. If we lose water, like a summer that we've had here with very little rain until recently, we'd be in a lot of trouble, so.
Summary of some of the, again, kind of recap, twenty seventeen expectations, year-to-date passes, it is mostly seniors that we have our passes with. More passes have been sold with additional league. Again, our number of outings are up, and players crowding are down. Do see the trend of- Do see the trend of continued select daily play instead of the season passes. Some people don't want to be tied to that season pass and feel they have to play a certain number of times to get their money back, so they'll, instead of doing that, not knowing how much free time they'll have, see more daily play there, and our junior golf numbers have been. Some of the issues just with golf in general that we've seen as trends, cost of play, that is something as people have, whether they have disposable income or not, whether they have the amount of time necessary to play golf. We're looking to be competitive in our pricing while also covering our cost, being competitive with area courses. Shafer and Fort Madison is seen as a primary comparison, similar type course, but also Spirit Hollow, which is a little higher-end course, and Burlington Golf Club, which is a private course here in Burlington. As mentioned, time of play, being able to have that time to do nine or 18 holes. Our pass holders being retirees, making sure those are, I guess, are people continuing to, as they retire, have more time coming out to play golf. Maintenance costs, condition of the course, making sure something like our pump house is in good working condition. If that were to fail in the middle of the season, I think we'd see our play significantly drop if we had some dry season. That could be a very big detriment to the course. Also in competition, merchandise sales with Dick's Sporting Goods, they have a very large selection. We have seen our merchandise sales go down, but that's also something where our costs go down. We don't purchase in stock as much merchandise, but they are a very big driver on those sales here locally. Needs and considerations, mowers and carts are the primary items, capital items that we need on a regular basis. One thing that we've looked at a number of times, different areas within the course is the driving range. Feel that would have a very positive impact on revenues with minimal cost. Something to get people more interested in golf, that maybe only want to spend a half hour, an hour, go out and hit some balls, but it's just with the area, our land, our setup, it's something, we've talked about it a number of times, just not able to have that set up and function without really, like, getting rid of a hole or so.
Or making a purchase of additional land.
Yeah, no land available within the existing course, there is some farmland to the west of the course, but obviously, we don't have a reserve to purchase that, and looking at that benefit down the road, but that would be something ideal for golf courses, having the driving range where you can generate that additional revenue. Just something we don't have. Kind of a brief summary on that, I want to thank Brad and Ted for their great job they do out there. Any questions, we can try and answer.
With that new pump house, what are, are there any cost savings as far as, like, what efficiencies it brings?
Yes, it should be more efficient, so we should save on utility costs with that. You know, it's a variable drive pump system, so, you know, it maybe wouldn't have to be ramped up for full tilt either, depending on the cycle of irrigation, what we're, how much water we're going to put down, so. Should be some energy savings.
Thank you.
Speaking from personal experience, the golf course is in gorgeous shape. Out there this morning, it was beautiful. And Ted does a great job, and you too, Brad, so I thank you. The group that I play with, they really, really enjoy our time out there, so it's good. And they always come in and buy something at the concession stand afterwards, so. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Jim, would this be the time to talk about Randy Weingard wanting to buy the place?
I'll keep that a secret.
We'll keep it a secret?
Yeah. No, one of the things that Bob has mentioned, he's, you've had a request from
Randy Weingard.
Randy Weingard to see if we would be interested in considering selling under some format.
With the understanding that if he did, if we did sell it to him, he would close the course?
So, I, based off of your mention of that, I have, did put in a call to them to see if they would, would, did want to do something on that, and they are going to be presenting a formal, I think, a formal offer for your consideration, yes or no, on what you want to do. And I think the big thing there was, if there was something like, that is purely a council decision, that's not something that
Right.
that staff can really make any evaluation on, that's something that if
Right.
if there is a willingness to consider it, it's from this group up here. Hoping to have that come to the council the next, next work session.
Yeah, I just want to get an answer to them, I mean, I know what it's going to be.
Just so that you can formally say one way or another what you, what you think of that.
Right.
My answer is no.
Well.
You don't know if that proposal would include anything about the employees, nothing?
I have no idea what that proposal would include.
My answer is no.
Okay, well, my assumption is, is that it probably wouldn't, but
Right.
we have to wait and see what a proposal would come back with.
Might as well hear it, that's right.
The course is done fairly well in terms of covering costs, and I think that's one of the things that you see from here. You can see, your main challenge is covering your capital costs. Your second challenge is your, you're, you've done well on the course usage, but you don't have it, you're struggling with your season pass holders.
I do think we're struggling with season pass holders, one of the reasons is our tournament and outing offering that possibly limits, you know, a Monday through Friday worker from coming in, however, that is guaranteed income that I don't think we can afford to turn away.
Exactly.
From a perspective of where this fits within city operations, we cover half of your salary in here. If you didn't have this, you'd have to make a decision, what are we doing with that position? That would be, that would be, notwithstanding talking about other employees that we have that are out at the golf course. One of the things that we do not cover within either the golf course or the recplex, and this has been pointed out as a criticism of how we show on our books, if we look at, say, the garbage, property maintenance, vehicle maintenance, sewer, we have an administrative fee that the general fund charges those funds to cover the costs of overhead. We do not do that with the recplex or the golf course, so there are some hidden costs within what we have to do to to make things happen from a personnel perspective, from, you know, covering Eric's position, covering payrolls, all of the finance department's overheads on there, so those are some costs in there, but they, given what it does with the community, there's a, where the main thing that we have to put into to make the golf course work is out of hotel motel tax fund, and it's, this is, I mean, it's very viable in terms of what you are asking that fund to cover. So from a staff perspective, we're not certainly pushing on getting rid of the course, but it certainly is something for you to think about. That's up to you as a council to figure out how you want to approach that.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob, for asking us to consider that and bring it forward to the council to have to work on.
I felt I had an obligation to do so.
Yes. Understand.
Any other questions, your comments? Okay.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
But again, this fits too, still within the area of, as you asked us to look at different areas that you're, this, during this year of.
Yeah, as far as budget.
This is one of those topics, because it does impact the bottom line, even if there's really, I mean, we've had general fund, we had, we've put significant general fund money in here over the last few years to get rid of the deficit, but not for operations. But even with that, we're, we are diverting funds out of hotel motel that you didn't, you don't necessarily have to.
Right.
I guess there's one other question, the winter league or the winter driving thing, is that, is that worth it?
We're getting a little bit of revenue from that. Obviously, honestly, I didn't get a real good gauge last year because we were able to open the course in February, so we, we took that down. So I'm kind of curious to see on another season how that's going to go. You know, there's a few regular players that come in. We've looked at trying to get a league started, and there hasn't been enough interest at this time, but we're going to try again here this winter.
In regards to that, as time goes on, depending on what happens with the indoor recplex, which we have had very little come forward for discussion at the council level, I think that's one of the things that is even within the variety of things that have been talked about there is a potential for that, and so you'd have to also monitor whether they act, whether that actually does become part of what they do long-term or not.
Okay.
It isn't there now, but it might, might be in the future.
Okay, anything else on that? Council?
No.
Okay, lastly, Eric, we have this Riverfront Advisory Committee memo from Mr. Gorley. Are you going to address that, or are you?
No, he wants me to.
I can tell by the look on his face.
This came forward from Ryan, Ryan Gorley, and then Charlie Walsh, and I'm not sure where within the communications between the two that this has been, or that this recommendation came up, but the membership on that group right now in our code has nine members on it, and then has me as ex officio. Ryan is the one that attends these meetings, and as my, essentially, you can, it functions as my representative, but the thought was to make his position be the one that is the ex, is the ex officio by code. There is also the thought of reducing the size of that group from nine to five. We typically have a difficult time filling positions, we've had one vacant position for quite a while. Currently, we have three vacant positions, and could get to a fourth within a, if you were to make an ordinance change, within a fairly reasonable length of time. But between the two of them, they would, they would like to recommend that the council consider modifying the ordinance to get down to a smaller group that, that sits on that. Five, and if you look at how groups function, five is a pretty good number for having decisions to be able to be made. Nine tends to be a little bit more unwieldy.
I think it's reasonable.
I do, too, I like it, actually.
Perfect. Yeah, do we have any other committees that are that large, that have that large of a group? That seems really. That doesn't seem like it functions well, I guess.
Renewable energy would probably, probably be the only one that is that kind of size, and that's, that's one that has maybe expanded as you've had some, just a lot of interest from people wanting to be involved. They, it's worked well, but it could potentially have the same type of issues as time went on, too.
I think it's important to note, like you say, there's three vacancies, so we're not kicking somebody off the committee.
Correct.
Right.
I think that's important to note.
I support the recommendation, I think it makes sense.
I agree.
Then that would be something that we'd see the process move forward with, getting the set date for public hearing ready to go on a future.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Okay, anybody from the back row, you have anything you want to add before we quit? How about you there?
The library. That was on here.
Oh, that's going to be next week, that's on a regular meeting. Okay?
We do have the police department, we're doing the walkthrough tomorrow afternoon.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock to, for kickoff for construction. So that is moving forward.
Two o'clock.
And I think that's setting up, making sure everyone knows what, what's being done when, and process for making sure invoices are submitted at the right times and things like that.
So, are we?
It's not something that you need to be at, it's just, it's more for us just to make sure that the contractor knows, and, and the engineering firm and us all know what's being done when.
Okay. Good.
Well, it's a busy week.
Yeah.
Yeah, this weekend is actually packed, full of music, all downtown, just, you can just hang out downtown from probably Thursday till Sunday and just enjoy. I know Washington Street's being closed down for a while from Friday to Saturday. There's a music festival going on, I know the Moral Auditorium has some music going on downtown that's free on the Riverfront, food trucks. When? Or, oh, yeah. I'm not sure when, but.
Okay.
All weekend, I'm just going to go down and hang out, so.
I don't have anything, do you have anything?
I have nothing, no.
Jim, you have anything else?
No, just as you mentioned, the auditorium, we, that wasn't on this work session agenda, it will be on the next one, we just didn't have to where we had enough of an update that made sense.
Okay, thanks, everybody, we're adjourned. Eric, did you have something?